Oh, the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Maybe seated.
Dr. Joseph Savoie is the sixth president to lead our university in its 120-year history. He is in his 10th year as its president. Prior to his appointment as UL Lafayette's top leader, Dr. Savoie was Louisiana's Commissioner of Higher Education for 12 years. Please welcome Dr. Joseph Savoie.
Well, good afternoon. And I think we ought to give it up one more time for Ms. Haley Boudreau, daughter of Senator Herr Boudreau. Typical UL Lafayette graduate. Let me join Chandler in welcoming everyone here to UL Lafayette. Governor, thank you for being here. We're honored that you've chosen the university to host this extraordinary gathering. We're pleased that First Lady Donna is with you. Welcome. Governor Blanco, thank you for being here. Welcome to Lieutenant Governor Nungeser, all the elected and appointed officials, all the elected and appointed officials, leadership from the Board of Regents and our systems, colleagues and students from colleges and universities across the state, board members, healthcare providers, law enforcement professionals, public servants, business and industry leaders, concerned and interested citizens. Welcome to each of you. Now, I have just a couple of housekeeping issues to discuss before we really get started. As you know, with this full crowd, parking has been a challenge and lots of parking tickets have been issued. But I don't want you to worry about that. For your convenience, we're setting up temporary paying booths at the exits of all the law. You can pay your fines before you leave. We accept cash, checks, and credit cards. We're just trying to build up a little kitty in case this session goes south. Now, by the way, if you have an LSU sticker on your vehicle, I've instructed university police to issue two tickets for an ob— That's an obvious double violation. I'm just kidding, King. You'll get one just like everyone else. Now, in addition to welcome you to campus, we also want to welcome you to the historic Earl K. Long Gymnasium, currently home to our volleyball team. This building was built in 1939. It's named for Earl Kemp Long, who served Louisiana as governor on three different occasions. For 80 years, this gym has hosted proms, plays, performances, receptions, and a variety of athletic events. It also serves as a landmark that links generations. Now, Governor, I think it's appropriate that you've chosen a university campus to address the state before a legislative session focused on finding solutions to the challenges that the state faces. It's appropriate because colleges and universities are places that foster collaboration and welcome new ideas. We value different perspectives and we seek solutions. And gathering in this historic building is symbolic of the historic impact that the special session will have on the future of our state. When a new student shows up on one of our campuses and fills out an application, we don't ask whether they're a Republican, or a Democrat, a conservative, or a liberal, or something in between. We ask them what they want to be. Now, during this special session, we should all ask ourselves what we want our state to be. A state constantly teetering on the edge of a financial cliff, or a state that is financially stable, making progress, and providing hope for communities and future generations. We hope that the university setting will inspire everyone to seek solutions and work together to serve the citizens of our state, not just for today, but for many years to come. So, once again, welcome to all our guests. We are honored by your presence, and I was just kidding about that ticket thing.
Thank you, Dr. Savoie, and thank you all for being here with us today. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the many elected officials who are with us. So, if you are an elected official, would you please stand so we can acknowledge you? Thank you again for coming. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce our next guest, the Honorable Billy Nungeser, who is Louisiana's 54th Lieutenant Governor. He took office in 2016 after serving two terms as Plaquemines Parish President. Mr. Nungeser became parish president in 2006 as Plaquemines continued to deal with the effects of Hurricane Katrina. Two years later, with Hurricanes Gustav and Ike, he led preparation and recovery efforts. And in 2010, he guided his home parish as it dealt with the consequences of the BP Deepwater Horizon rig explosion and oil spill in the Gulf of Mexico. Among other duties, as Lieutenant Governor, he heads the State Office of Culture, Recreation, and Tourism. In that role, he has emerged as a tireless ambassador for Louisiana and its cultural heritage. Please welcome Lieutenant Governor Billy Nungeser.
Thank you. Wow. Thank you very much. Mr. President, I could use a portion of those tickets for tourism. To all the elected officials and special guests here today, I'm truly honored to be here as your Lieutenant Governor. I started my business just a few miles down the road in Broussard with an old shipping container and turned it into a business building living quarters for the offshore oil industry. On January 11, 2016, I was inaugurated as the 54th Lieutenant Governor of Louisiana. And I promised then to be a Lieutenant Governor for all of Louisiana. Since taking office, I have demanded fiscal accountability throughout my entire department. While our department has seen greater cuts by more than 50% over the last 12 years, more than any other state agency, we have continued to be successful by looking at cost-saving measures and how we do more with less, promoting our state effectively and ensuring that our tourism base expands through smart marketing and partnerships. This year, we saw our sixth record-breaking year in tourism, with 47.1 million visitors visiting Louisiana, who spent $17.5 billion generating $1.8 billion in state and local taxes. That comes out to a little over $1,000 in taxes per family that Louisianans didn't have to pay. And all those great numbers will continue to see growth. Tourism is the third-largest producer of revenue to the State General Fund, and we employ more than 233,000 people in the tourism industry. That is the fourth-largest industry here in Louisiana. Every dollar we spend in tourism generates a $37 return. Now, at a time when the oil field is struggling, the tourism industry continues to bring business to those communities that need it most and helps with local restaurants, shops, and hotels. Now, let me say here today, tourism and state parks should never, should never rank above healthcare, education, and fixing our infrastructure, but it is an important part of our economy. I too am encouraged about the future of Louisiana and hopeful that we can come together to put Louisiana first and work together for the greater good of Louisiana. The people of Louisiana deserve that. I'm here today to pray that we can come together and fix the budget, not as Democrats and Republicans, but as Louisianans. Thank you, and God bless you, and God bless the great state of Louisiana. Thank you. And now, it gives me great honor to introduce the Governor of the great state of Louisiana, Governor John Bell Edwards.
Thank you. Thank all of you. God bless you. Thank you, Lieutenant Governor Billy Nungeser, for the introduction and for being here today and joining me in our call that we come together as Louisianans right now for the future of our great state. And I want to give a special thanks to Dr. Joseph Savoie. Thank you so much. Mayor-President Joe Robideau, thank you for being here and for doing such a wonderful job in Lafayette. And all of the folks at the University of Louisiana Lafayette, thank you for your hospitality. You all have worked extremely hard to make this event happen, and I cannot thank each of you enough. And Chandler, you've done a great job here this afternoon. Thank you so much. And I want to thank all the lawmakers who are here for making the trek from all around the state. And I know this isn't quite the opening session venue that you're used to, but I figured you wouldn't mind a little change of scenery before getting back to work in Baton Rouge. And I want to thank all of our university leaders, healthcare leaders, law enforcement, local elected officials for joining us here as well. But most importantly, thank all of you, the great people of the great state of Louisiana, for being here today and filling this gymnasium to capacity with people extending out through the center, out the door. You know, usually we begin a session— Usually, we begin a session with me delivering an address in the House chamber to both the House and the Senate. This time, I came here to speak directly to you. Honestly, the climate in Baton Rouge is not producing the results that you deserve, and I know that you are frustrated by that, and who could blame you? The decisions that are made inside the Capitol affect those of you outside of it. They affect all of us. So, it just made sense to me to come here to talk about what lies ahead. And it's important for elected officials to get outside of that place as often as possible and interact with the people who are directly affected by their decisions. That is why we are here today, and it's why I invited every single legislator to be with us in a place like this instead of in Baton Rouge. And my hope is that we can shake the divisive partisanship that's begun to take root, put aside our differences, and put in place solutions the people of Louisiana deserve. As Billy just mentioned, now is the time to be Louisianans first and foremost. While the budget is certainly important to me, it's my role as governor, I know it's even more important to you, the citizens of the great state of Louisiana. And as you might have seen from last week, I made the tough decision to veto the budget the legislature sent me. That veto should not have come as a surprise to anyone. The House of Representatives and the Senate passed wildly differing budgets, one that completely decimated healthcare in Louisiana and the other funded healthcare and decimated everything else, including higher education, TOPS, and other critical state services, while ignoring that a nearly 25% cut to our state agencies would leave thousands of our fellow Louisianans out of work and our agencies unable to function. In my opinion, and in the opinion of members, both Republican and Democrat of the legislature, that budget proposal was not worthy of the people of Louisiana. Simply put— Simply put, the cuts were too deep, too wide, too catastrophic. We must do better because it's your healthcare. It's your hospitals. It's your loved ones who are on waivers or in nursing homes. It's the food on your table. It's your TOPS, your college education. This isn't about me. This is about all of us. This is about our Louisiana. And our people and our state are worth fighting for. In fact, I chose to come here today because UL Lafayette is one of our many universities that could face a disaster, a catastrophic cut. And not far from here is a community technical college that is also facing a funding cut. And just down the street is Lafayette General. Come July 1st, if we don't fix this problem, our partner hospital here in Lafayette may close. And whether you're in Lake Charles, Baton Rouge, New Orleans, Bogalusa, Alexandria, Shreveport, or Monroe, our partner hospitals that have already faced cuts two years in a row would be forced to close should we not maintain adequate funding for them. And for those of you out there who may think that this just means the poor and the uninsured would lose care, think again. When a hospital's doors close, it closes for everyone in that community. All across Louisiana, graduates have been walking across the stage to receive their high school diplomas. Many of them have also been wondering if they'll be able to afford their college education come August should TOPS not be funded. Sadly, some of our best and brightest have decided that they could not risk that scenario and reluctantly accepted scholarships from schools out of state. And I don't know if we'll ever be able to get them back, but I can tell you that I for one am going to fight like hell to try to get them back to Louisiana. Tonight, the legislature is going to convene a special session that I called in order to fix what we've been referring to for two years as the fiscal cliff. Let me just briefly remind you how we got here. When I took office just over two years ago, I inherited a $2 billion budget shortfall. And rather than make permanent long-term reforms, the legislature passed temporary revenue measures that expire very soon, about six weeks from today. Now, this won't be the first opportunity the legislature's had to fix the cliff, but now we have seen just how ugly inaction can be because it is that ugly budget that I vetoed. That inevitably is where we go if we don't fix the cliff. But now is the time to look to the future, not the past. What makes this special session different is that we've reached the end of the road. This is it. On June 30th, $1.4 billion in temporary revenue that has been funding all of those critical priorities that we just talked about goes away. It will be gone, and that is not a number that I or anyone in my administration has created. That number, $1.4 billion, comes from the Legislative Fiscal Office. And the Revenue Estimating Conference, a committee of economists and legislators that is tasked with determining how much money we can spend each fiscal year, has estimated that the State General Fund shortfall is $648 million, meaning that we don't have to replace all of the expiring revenue, just a portion of it. Maintaining the $648 million will allow us to adequately fund all of our critical priorities— and listen to this—will still result in a next tax cut for the people of Louisiana of $400 million. Let me say that again because the word has not been getting through to the people across the state of Louisiana. We are not seeking to replace all of the revenue that we are losing, just a portion of it, and we can fund our critical priorities and still give the people of Louisiana a $400 million tax cut. Now, take partisan politics out of the way and looking solely at the issue before us, who wouldn't jump at the opportunity to fully fund our partner hospitals, our medical schools, TOPS, GoGrants, corrections, law enforcement, the National Guard, higher education, the Department of Agriculture, and our parks and tourism? And at the same time, reduce the tax burden on the people of Louisiana by $400 million. This shouldn't be so hard, should not have taken so long. You know, I talk a lot about the incredible momentum we have in Louisiana right now. We're well on our way to some of the most prosperous days we've seen in decades, but we threaten that momentum by not acting. This is what that momentum looks like. Just last Friday, the Bureau of Labor and Statistics at the U.S. Department of Labor announced that employment in Louisiana hit an all-time high. More people are working in Louisiana than ever before. After years of so much budget instability, we ended the last fiscal year with a small surplus rather than yet another deficit. And by the way, unemployment is at a 10-year low. And in 2017— Thank you, Ava. In 2017, Louisianans took home more money in their paychecks than they did in 2016. And by the way, wage growth exceeded the national average of 2.4%. In Louisiana, last year was 2.9%. We face some challenging times in this region and in other oil and gas-producing regions of Louisiana, and we're immensely proud of the resiliency our workers and companies have shown and continue to show as they fight to bounce back. The momentum that we've seen building doesn't mean that we've reached the finish line. We've still got a long way to go, a long road ahead, but these are signs of improvement that show that we are moving in the right direction. And speaking of moving in the right direction, Medicaid expansion is improving health outcomes, generating $3.5 billion in economic activity in our state, supporting 19,000 jobs while saving us more than $300 million in State General Funds. Just last week, I was leaving an event, and a young man came up to me literally in tears. He had been diagnosed with cancer, and he is now receiving treatment because we made the bold decision to bring our federal tax dollars home and help our people get healthcare coverage through the Medicaid expansion. He was crying, telling me how much it meant to him and to his family, and it's stories like that that reaffirm my belief that expanding Medicaid was the easiest big decision I will ever make for the great state of Louisiana. You know, for the first time in a decade, we've stabilized funding for higher education. This helped us land the biggest economic development deal in Louisiana's history with DSC Technology. What helped us beat out other states like Tennessee was our commitment to higher education and the partnership we were building between the company and higher education institutions across Louisiana. And that's just one example. We've been making bigger and better economic development announcements than ever before, and we're being innovative in the approach that we take to luring companies to Louisiana, not with massive giveaways, but with partnerships with higher education and a renewed commitment to fund the programs that will train the men and women who will fill those good-paying jobs. It's all part of our effort to expand opportunity and to diversify our economy, like making Louisiana a hub for technology companies. And I'm very excited to tell you that here today, I've got another one for you, right here in Lafayette, Mr. Mayor-President. You know, back in 2016, we unveiled the new 50,000-square-foot information technology center here on the campus of the University of Louisiana Lafayette with CGI's IT Center of Excellence. The $13.1 million facility promised 400 direct, high-quality jobs and an annual payroll exceeding $22 million. In March, we announced that they had met their commitment, hiring their 400th employee. And today, I am happy to announce that CGI has extended its commitment in Louisiana for an additional three years through 2027, and in addition to retaining the 400 direct jobs currently in place, has committed to hire an additional 400 good-paying, high-quality jobs by 2023, right here in Acadiana. Statewide, CGI will employ 900 people, with 800 of those working at the company's Lafayette locations. Now, this partnership would not have been possible but for our commitment to higher education in general and in particular, our commitment to UL Lafayette and its ability to train the employees, to educate the employees that CGI needs to fill these positions. And by extending our partnership with CGI, we all win. We bring the leading jobs of tomorrow to our state. We tripled the number of computer science graduates here at the university, and we secure good growth for Acadiana and Louisiana. And we did all of this together, and we didn't do it as Democrats. We didn't do it as Republicans. We did it because we all want our Louisiana to be the best place in the country to raise a family, to get an education, to find a good-paying job, have a rewarding career, and take care of our loved ones. Over the next two weeks, we have a chance, our last chance, to make the responsible choice to solve a problem that has plagued us for too long and held us in limbo, a problem that we have seen coming for two years. And I see this as an opportunity to fix things here in Louisiana. We've got to look at this situation for what it is, an unnecessary roadblock between the Louisiana people that sadly come to expect and the much better one that they deserve. We've got to stop living crisis to crisis if we want to make the progress the people of this state want and need. As leaders, we simply cannot continue to talk about moving Louisiana forward if we're going to continue the policies to keep us at the bottom of the good list and at the top of the bad list. We've got to change it up. We've got to hit the reset button. We need to do it now so that we can stabilize our state, so that we can budget responsibly and allow our revenue to grow with our economy so that going forward, we can transform our state. For example, with the right approach, we can finally give our teachers a long overdue pay raise. We can grow our early childhood education program so that children are better prepared for the future. We can finally reinvest in higher education rather than merely protect higher education institutions from cuts year after year. When you leave today, after you take that parking ticket off of your window, I urge you to look around this campus. We have some of the most beautiful, most highly regarded schools in the country. The students who go to our schools and the faculty who work at our universities and community technical colleges, we're so proud of them as well. Just look around this gym. This is the spirit that fuels our Louisiana. You know, we have the fifth lowest tax burden in the entire country, but we also have one of the most complicated tax systems. We can change that, starting today, and we can continue to lure business and investments and jobs to our state. There's nothing harmful about our business climate, except that we've made so—our system—so unpredictable. We can change that. We have to get it done. And I'm confident that we can. I'm actually confident that we will because from the most progressive Democrats to the most conservative Republicans, there was near universal support in the legislature to do better by the people of Louisiana. That's why I know this special— That's why I know this special session can be different from all of the others. More of us are on the same page. We want the same things. But I'm not naive, and you shouldn't be either. It will not be easy because the options before us have not changed. You know, we actually had a legislatively-created task force to study our tax and budget system and tell us what we need to do. And I borrowed from that. And here is what I'm proposing. That we cut the sales tax from its current rate of 5%. You know, in 2016, the legislature approved temporarily a 1-cent sales tax increase that is set to expire on June 30th. And that makes up the bulk of the fiscal cliff. While I would personally rather do away with that additional penny of sales tax altogether, I'm willing to meet in the middle. I'm willing to compromise, which for me is not a dirty bird, a dirty word. It's not a dirty bird either. Thinking about those Atlanta Falcons, I guess. Compromise is not a dirty word. You know, we can reduce the sales tax and cut that fifth penny at least by half. And the four existing pennies of sales tax have over 180 exemptions on them. And not two of them are taxed the same. That goes against every best-practice model out there. Let's simplify the system, reduce the number of tax exemptions that we hand out, and make this entire process easier for businesses. Simply put, the four pennies that we keep should look like the fifth penny that we created. As we reduce these exemptions, let's keep our sales taxes one of the least regressive in the country by keeping in place exemptions for groceries, pharmaceuticals, and residential utilities. Now, this one should be a no-brainer. And this one should be a no-brainer. We're one of only five states to allow this... Well, we're one of five states to allow this in the entire country. And every economist out there agrees that it doesn't make sense. Let's eliminate the ability for individuals to deduct what they paid in state taxes last year from this year's return. You know, this proposal is supported by Democrats and Republicans, so let's come together to make it happen. Finally, let's remove the expiration date from the savings created in 2015 when we reduced the cost of tax expenditures related to tax credits, deductions, and rebates. Making these changes permanent will also allow us to make strategic spending cuts to state government on top of the more than $600 million in state spending that I have already cut in my administration. And yes, we can do all of this and still reduce the tax burden of the people of Louisiana by $400 million. That's a pretty good deal. And I know that most people out there agree. But there are other options, and I am willing to listen, which is why I purposely made the call for this special session broad. I'm flexible with how we go about doing this. And while I have flexibility about how we solve the problem, I'm not flexible as to whether we solve our problem. We have to do that. I believe Louisiana is best served when we come together and listen to one another, which is what I've been willing to do all along. But what I can't accept is disagreement just for the sake of being disagreeable. And you shouldn't either. You deserve better. Now, I came here so that I could speak directly to you, the people of Louisiana. And by now, I know many of you are wondering what you can do to ensure your voices are heard. Well, being here is a great start, but it's just a start. The next thing you can do is contact your legislators. Give them a call and tell them that you support a responsible, balanced plan to fix the cliff. Tell them you support a plan to cut taxes by $400 million, but yet fund our critical priorities. And I understand it can be intimidating to call an elected official, especially if you've never done it before. I get it. But I was once, and not long ago, a legislator myself. And there is nothing that influences a legislator more than hearing from the people that he or she worked for. And if you believe, like I do, that our state is worth fighting for, then it certainly is worth it to pick up the phone and let your legislators know that you expect us all to work together to responsibly fix this cliff that's looming before us and budget so that we can protect our critical priorities. Please do that. And if you're wondering how to contact your state senators and state representatives, we're going to make it easy for you. Visit ourlouisiana.org. OurLouisiana.org. And we'll make sure you know how to do that. And as always, when it comes to making your voices heard, I ask that you pray. Join your prayers to mine and to Donna's because we believe in the awesome power of prayer. And pray that we can come together as a nation, as a state, leaders at all levels, and work together to solve our problems in a balanced, responsible way, never forgetting the least among us. Those are precisely the ones without lobbyists in the Capitol advocating for their interests. But they shouldn't need lobbyists to tell us what we know is right, to tell us what Jesus himself told us is right. As I've said before, this fiscal cliff, this next budget, certainly a challenge. But moreover, and more so, it is a tremendous opportunity. And I stand before you genuinely excited about what's going to happen over the next few weeks because I believe we are going to come together to solve these problems, once and for all. But more importantly, I'm excited about what's going to happen as our Louisiana continues to prosper over the coming months and years. One last time, we have a chance, and we have a choice. Will we seize this opportunity to keep this train on its tracks?